We're live.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Trotwood Madison Board of Education regular meeting, Thursday, November 19, 2020, livestream via YouTube in accordance with COVID-19 recommendations at 5:30 to order. Ms. Allen, will you please call the row?
Yes, Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman.
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Is she on mute?
We can't hear you, Mrs. Bozeman, but we see you, but we can't hear you.
We still are not hearing you.
You might need to turn up your volume on your computer.
Can I make one suggestion? Ms. Bozeman, are you on your desktop or laptop? And if you're on your desktop, you might need to unplug and re-plug in your webcam. We had that problem with Dr. Cosby earlier.
I don't know, I just get out completely.
We can barely hear you now.
Can you hear me now? You can't hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, so yes.
Technology is great when it works, okay?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, the meeting has now been called to order. I now would like Vice President Bozeman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item up, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Our second?
I have a motion and a second. Are there any changes? Addendums, additions? Dr. Cosby, your mouse moving, but you're on mute. Are you? Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. I would like to suggest in addition, an executive session for two reasons. One, discipline of a public employee, and the second is information that is confidential.
Okay, so what we'll do is we will add the executive session as item 13. And again, to consider the discipline of a public employee and matters to be kept confidential by federal state law or rules of statute. Is that good? Any others? Being that, Ms. Allen, will you please call the row?
Yes. Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, the agenda has now been adopted. Next item up, Ms. Allen, do we have any community comments this evening?
I do not have any.
Okay, in that case, we'll move on to our presentations tonight. We have three presentations. We're really super excited. And our first presentation is First Priority Urgent Care. And this is Dr. Jenny Worey Boku. Got it right? Yes, you're on mute, Jenny, Dr. Jenny, but please.
There you go.
Thank you, please. Yeah, I wanted to do a little introduction. Dr. Jenny is part of our community. She supports our students in many different aspects. Now that we are under a pandemic, there is so much information that our district needs to know and also that we can share with the community along the lines of COVID testing. So I got a flyer and I thought, you know what, we could use this information. And I think it's attached to the board agenda for the board. But Dr. Worey Boku, Boku, right? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and give you the mic.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. As mentioned before, I'm Dr. Jenny Worey Boko. I'm the owner, position owner of First Priority Urgent Care, located right here in Trotwood. We are located where the old Burton used to be, in that plaza, on the Over Valley Credit Union building, exactly. So we've been there for about three years, and we're just here serving the community. We love what we do. We're getting a great response from the community. People are supporting, they're coming in, bringing their families in, and we're trying to take care of the community best we can, especially during this pandemic. And the closing of Good Sam, people need to have healthcare in their backyard. So we are here and available for the community, and we want them to know that we provide COVID testing. With this pandemic going on, and it's spreading so fast, as you guys know, we are here to help the community get tested so we can identify who has the virus, then they can quarantine themselves appropriately and properly so to protect their household and their families, and therefore that protects the community. Because we also own households, take care of our household, and everyone did the same thing, and wear our masks out in public. That will help slow down the spread of this virus. So our First Priority Urgent Care wants to help the community, is that we offer that. We offer testing, no appointment is needed. We're open seven days a week. We're open Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We're open on Saturday, 9:00 to 5:00, and on Sunday, 1:00 to 7:00. So we have all days covered, so people who work, they can't get off at certain times. We're here after hours and on weekends. And we just want the community to know that we're here for them. We take all insurances. Most insurers are covering the testing, so there's no copays, there's no cost for them. They just come in without an appointment, and we test them, and we're getting our results back with a great turnaround, about 48 hours. We're getting our testing back to people, letting them know, hey, quarantined, or you're doing well, you go back to work and things of that nature. So as First Priority Care, we want all of the community that we're here for them. We're here as a community to help everyone out and help our district out to keep everybody safe during this pandemic.
Wonderful. So are there any questions? Our comments from the board? Well, I just want to clarify something. Did you say that no appointment is needed?
That's correct. It's a walk-in basis. Urgent care just come on in, and it's first come, first served. So we have been doing a lot of testing. We've tested at least 50, 50 a day recently. So we need some patience, but we're giving people in and out. We have a call-in service, where you can also call. And when you're out in the parking lot, especially if it's busy due to the number restrictions that could be in the building, people can sit in their cars, and we got them in order, and we'll come out and swab you. We'll take our information over the phone, put it on our computer, register you, get your information, and then come out to your car, swab you if people are leaving. So we're trying to implement that service, and it's been going very well, given the volume that's coming in rapidly quickly. But we're doing the best we can, and we're taking care of everybody and getting a great turnaround.
Wow. That is so important to know, that we have somebody in our backyard in urgent care at seven days a week. And again, your hours are very conducive for most people, so, you know, again, thank you. Thank you for sharing that information. Good information. That's what we always want to do. We want to make sure that we pass the information on. We want to make sure that our district family knows what they have access to. And again, we appreciate you as a community partner. Thank you for your support with our students, ongoing support. And again, it was a great presentation. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have BASA Award, and that's Kirk Hamilton.
So, Madam President, members of the board, I'm not sure. I've got a little technical issue going here. Does the camera show me now?
Yeah, we can see your nose down.
Nose down? How's that?
There you go. There you go.
I apologize, but for some reason or another, I can't get my front camera going, so apologies. Madam President, members of the board, it is a privilege for me to join you virtually tonight. I am the Executive Director of the Buckeye Association of School Administrators. We are the professional organization for superintendents and district-level leaders in Ohio. We have over 900 members, and we provide support and representation to our members with the Governor's Office, the Ohio Department of Education, as well as the Ohio General Assembly. Additionally, we're a member, very much a member-driven organization. We have 15 standing committees that meet regularly with the state superintendent, the finance director at the Ohio Department of Education, a legislative committee, a women and leadership committee, and the list goes on. But we're very active, and we ask our members to be very active. One of the things we do, that I think is one of the more important things we do, excuse me, if not the most important thing, is to recognize our members each year. Each year, our state, our association is divided into 10 regions throughout the state, and each fall, at our Fall Conference, we recognize a superintendent from each of those regions for their exemplary leadership. And I'm honored to, tonight, to be with you, to present your superintendent, Dr. Cosby, with the BASA Exemplary Leadership Award. And while she hasn't been with you an extremely long time, I'm sure that you have quickly realized her passion, her leadership, her commitment, and her work ethic. And it's a privilege for us to present her this award tonight. And I think it's an especially important award because this is not a lifetime achievement award. You don't want it because it's your turn. I could say, I made the selections. But this award is one that is selected by her peers. So her colleagues, superintendents throughout southwest Ohio, are the ones who made this selection. And I think that demonstrates the respect and admiration they have for Riva. I think it also demonstrates her willingness to be very active in our profession. And a lot of that benefits the Trotwood Madison Schools directly, and some of that effort benefits your district indirectly. But I've known Dr. Cosby for a long time now, and I find her to be personable and caring and committed and someone who wants the best for all children. And she is willing to do what it takes and make the hard decisions and provide leadership in order to do that. So on behalf of the Buckeye Association of School Administrators, and I'd like to read a bit of the proclamation. The proclamation is hereby presented by the Buckeye Association of School Administrators to recognize outstanding educational leadership, which has resulted in enhancement and improvement of educational opportunities for the elementary and secondary students of Ohio. Therefore, be it known that the membership of the Buckeye Association of School Administrators salutes you for your efforts and accomplishments on behalf of the youth of Ohio and gratefully bestows upon you the designation and distinction of being an exemplary educational leader. Riva, congratulations. It's recognition well-deserved, and it's recognition that reflects your standing in the profession and with your colleagues throughout southwest Ohio. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. I hope you guys can see me. My phone, my computers never went out before, but it did, so I'm on my phone. So I'm a little bit thrown off, but I so appreciate your taking the time to come down and to present this award. And I also would like to note on my board who sent me some beautiful flowers. I'd like to show them. They are some big old flowers. I had to figure out how to get them over here.
Wow.
Okay, let's see if I can find the flowers. Okay, here they are. I hope you got your flowers. So thank you. I really appreciate it all. Thanks so much.
Well, we have a large plaque that will be coming your way when we can meet in person.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you all for having me.
Thank you. Congratulations, Dr. Cosby.
Thank you.
Well done and well deserved. Next up, we have Twin Tig donation to our music program, and that's Ms. Lynette Deco. Oh, you're on mute. Hi, we can see you, but you're on mute. Mute. So we need you to unmute. Fine. Oh, there you go. Okay, I want to introduce the president of Twin Tig, Mrs. Jacqueline Kovar. She'll speak first. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I want to share a few tidbits about our organization. We were founded in 1976 by Alice Lucas, Grace Williams, and a group of 20 dynamic women. We're an African-American civic organization with involvement in preserving African-American historic sites. We support programs to benefit families, youth, and the elderly through our resource committee. It is our belief that visual and performing arts play an important role in developing and sustaining a culture. Therefore, we support the arts within the community by exposing youth groups to performances, by purchasing tickets, by purchasing and refurbishing musical instruments for students, and by providing grants to musical programs. Twin Tig has an endowment in the name of Willis Bing Davis at the Dayton Foundation to provide scholarships for graduating high school seniors who are majoring in the arts. This scholarship is recurring, although they have to reapply, but if you get it once, it's no problem in reissuing it to you. This evening, we're ecstatic that we can offer you a grant for $1,500 to support music students, your middle school students at Westbrook Village. Thank you, Lynette.
Okay.
She has that. Janice has it.
Okay, Janice has it. Okay. There's our mini check. And I believe, Janice, you have received the actual check by now.
I will have to check on that, but we'll definitely be looking for it.
Okay, it's real.
It's from the foundation. And I wanted to give you a symbolic representation for your files, for your records. Because we're proud of what we do. The money that we earn, that we're able to present to you in grants, is from our fundraisers. And you know fundraisers are many, so we have to compete, and we do that through the ingenuity of our committee and our organization to raise money not only for music instruments, but also for community resources. But I want to say, as chairperson of the Music Instruments Committee, there are things that we all know about music that are important, that relate to children. First, I want to say, music is universal. So children are learning to sing and talk and dance to music very young these days, right? Yes, yeah, yes. So music is universal. Music is an icebreaker. When we can't get children to talk, we'll play some music. And for those who think that children haven't learned, oh, they know all the words to certain raps. We know that music plays an important part in the learning process. Third, we know that music is introduced to youth very early these days, even prenatal, even during the in-utero process, to help calm the mom and soothe the baby and get them interested in the rhythmic beauty of music. We're carrying that over to the schools, and I salute Trotwood for your musical programs. I've seen them in action, and I truly enjoy your music program. I want to salute Mrs. Lisa Minor and her staff, who pulled together an excellent proposal, grant proposal for you this year. It's linking, it's a transition program to transition youth in the sixth grade over to the middle school and make sure that what they learned in middle and elementary has not been lost over the summer and as they proceed through the middle school process. The grant was awarded originally for $1,000, but by the grace of God and the luck of the Irish, the grant was increased to $1,500. We're looking for great things from Trotwood this year. If there is a program, if there is a presentation, we would like to be invited. The Twin Tig members are pretty active in the community and all around the world. We have one member who's now living in Hawaii, and if your program is good enough, maybe she'll get to come back. Really, but you understand what I'm saying.
We'll come to her.
We cherish. We cherish the music instruments and the programs that youth are involved in. And we want to see it expanded. And one way that we want to show or know that it's expanded is we want to see more youth from Trotwood, from Dayton, from every school, every underrepresented population represented in the Dayton Youth Orchestra, sponsored by the Dayton Philharmonic. That is our ultimate goal, to make sure that children with an innate talent through the youth of teachers and parent involvement. We want to see our youth better represented, better represented in all the community resources in the city and in the region. If you have any questions, feel free to call me. In my spare time, I do make symbolic checks, and I'm glad that you will have one to represent the Music Instruments Committee. As Mrs. Kovar said, this money is stored at the Dayton Foundation. They draw the checks for us. We are a 501(c)(3) program, and we are glad to share our resources with you this year. I thank you.
We thank you. We thank you. We applaud you. We appreciate all your support. It's wonderful. You said it was 1,000, and then with the grace of God, it is now $1,500 that you were able to give Trotwood Madison.
Yes.
For that, we are grateful.
Yes.
Any comments?
We just want to give to the community. We want to invest in our youth, and we want them to excel and be all that they can be in this day and age.
Yeah, well, thank you so much. Any comments from the board? Any questions about the program? Thank you both so much. We really appreciate you. You can come back anytime.
I'd love to come and visit, and I want to congratulate Dr. Crosby, Cosby, Cosby, my sorority sister and my friend, for the most recent award she's received tonight. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ladies, and have a great evening, and thank you for joining us. And thank you so much again for your continued support.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. We appreciate our Zoom meeting tonight.
Yeah.
Google Meet. We appreciate it.
Good night. Good night.
We're gonna sign off.
Okay, thank you so much, ladies.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Next up, we have our board report. Item A is long-term building substitutes. We put this here because there's an item on, I believe, our personnel agenda, and we went over it in our work session, but I wanted just some clarification, Dr. Cosby, on the long-term subs, how it works. And I know we have two. We were looking at getting one for each building, I believe. So maybe if you can give us an update and some information.
Yes. We decided due to COVID, as we saw so many teachers who had to leave due to contact tracing, that we were unable to secure substitutes in the buildings. So to try to stem that, we decided that it would be important for this year especially to have subs that would come every day to work and be available in the building as needed. So the goal actually is two subs per building. I believe at this point, we've hired maybe three, but I can confirm that with Dr. Davis. We are paying also a little more per day for these subs because we did want to ensure that they would be available to sub and to cover for our staff members. They are going to work even as we're in remote. They will continue to support our staff, and they will be available for them. They will be that second person in a classroom that is so needed so frequently. And that's how we ended up doing building subs this year. And again, primarily, it's due to the fact that COVID-19 has required so many staff members to be away from school.
Could you please elaborate on the program itself? Because I had misunderstood. I know that we're paying them double what we typically pay a sub, correct? Okay, and then after so many days, is it 60 days?
Yes.
Then by law?
If they work continuously for two months, then they start on a first-year teacher's scale, and they get paid that for as long as they continue to work. So that is the way this program works. And yes, we are paying them $200 a day, but again, we are having them in the building every day. They're not like a sub who you call and they can say yes or no. They will come. They are committing to be there for our teachers every day.
Okay, now, since we're remote and we're not going to be in the buildings, what does that look like?
They will be that second person on a camera with teachers. They will be, and I know we've talked about in our board meetings before, just how impactful that can be, you know, for our staff to have someone available to assist them. We are remote, but it is also possible for people to be so sick that they cannot even work remotely. And in those cases, they will also serve as substitutes for those teachers.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up. Board, are there any questions regarding the long-term building substitutes?
President Moore, is it possible I can say something?
Yes, please. Go right ahead, Ms. Allen.
I wanted to just say that Dr. Davidson and I looked at the financial piece of this. Last year, the district spent $435,934 on the substitute overall. So we have internal subs, we would have long-term subs, we could have regular subs. So that was a very significant amount. We did, when you talk about a sub after 60 days, assuming the minimum salary of a first-year teacher, that first-year teacher's salary is $40,279. If you divide that by 186, that equates to $216 per day. So the $200 that we initially gave them to start is almost the same after their 60 days. So it's from $200 to $216. And I just wanted to say that from a financial perspective. The other thing I wanted to point out is that there is a board policy. It's policy 3120.04, and it does specifically state the substitute after 60 days, what their rate will be at a current teacher's salary schedule, a bachelor's step zero. So I wanted to just relate that to you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. It's always important to know the bottom line. Okay, thank you. It's always important to know the bottom line. And it sounds as if it's gonna be quite a savings overall. Any questions or comments, Board?
I do have a question. Dr. Cosby, so in the event that the teacher is out, um, would that, would the substitute be like a co-host in the classroom? Like if they're both, um, remote, so both maybe at home? Would they just both show up in the, in the classroom to, in the Google classroom and not a physical classroom?
Right.
Okay.
When we're remote, that's what it would look like.
So the, so the substitute is like a co-host?
Yes, and they can check the chat box. They can answer questions. They can be the one that says, please sit up. You're, you know, napping privately to a student so that it, you know, sort of can keep the classroom moving along nicely.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
And President Moore, one other financial tidbit that after a, a regular sub after 30 days, their salary does increase to, to, to the $200 per day.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we are, um, we are using CARES funding to, one of our CARES funding sources.
Yes, yes.
So what happens to those long-term subs when that CARES funding is, is, uh, is gone?
We have CARES funding that will go through, um, 2022. And so, um, we're hoping that by then the need for the COVID long-term subs will, you know, will have gone away.
So there's no chance of these long-term subs, once that funding has been depleted, to be moved over to general fund?
That is not, at this point.
Okay, I just wanna, I, I just wanna make the point that when that money is gone, that these don't become additional positions and additional personnel drawing from the, uh, the general fund.
No, Mr. Scares, these are substitutes. Even though they're long-term substitutes, it's still a substitute position.
Right, I, I understand that. But that substitute position money is, is COVID money at this point. But at some point.
We renew them every year, is that correct? Mrs. Allen, we, we renew substitutes each year?
Uh, I, I'll let Dr. Davis speak to that if you don't mind.
Well, before, before Dr. Davis does that, renewing substitutes every year really isn't the question. The question, the question is, is once the COVID dollars that are allowing these positions to be in effect is gone, are these positions gone as well? Or are they gonna be moved to general fund? That's my question.
Yes, 2022, to be quite honest with you, I, I cannot answer that for sure. But I would say probably not. We would find other money. If we continue to have a need for substitutes, which we had to the tune of $435,000 last year, you know, it might still be to our benefit to do that. But at this point, that we're talking two years out, I, I have no idea the situation that we're gonna be in. If we continue to be in this state with COVID, then that money may continue as well. In which case we would keep the COVID money. But that's a question that I would be doing, um, some type of hypothesizing that I, I cannot do at this point. But right now, that money is good for till 2022 and we may not be for next year.
And are there, are there contracts from year to year?
Right, yes. So at the end of, at the end of each year, their, that, their contract is terminated. So depending on what we, we turn, deem necessary for the following year, we will determine whether we, uh, will, um, then hire them again. So they, those term, those contracts are terminated at the end of the year.
And that's why I mentioned that.
Okay, so we'll have the opportunity to quote-unquote assess, you know, at the end of that contract term. Correct?
That's what I had said earlier. Yes.
Thank you.
I think we would also be looking to, to see what we've spent on subs and the benefit of having the building subs in the building. And I think that's, I'm probably repeating what was already said. So, yeah, I, I think we're a couple of years out.
Thank you, Ms. Jeter Freeman. Any other questions or comments? Well, being that, we'll move on. We are moving on to the consent agenda. And all these items are for approval tonight. Approval of the meeting minutes from September 26, 2020. Special meeting October 1st, 2020. Work session October 15th, 2020 and regular meeting. Works, work session, okay. October 1st, work session, October 15th, 2020, regular meeting. Um, item B is approval of Miami County ESC contract for Title I services at St. Christopher. Item C is approval of proposed extension and amendment to sponsorship, marketing and naming rights agreement with Miami Valley Hospital from October 18th, 2020 through October 18th, 2023. I now need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. The consent agenda passes. Next item, treasurer's report.
I have several things to present to you this evening for action. Um, 6A is the approval of the FY '21 amended appropriations. Um, and the reason I brought this to you today was for two things. The $1 million, um, check that I received on Tuesday, um, I wanted to include the appropriation, um, increase the appropriations for that. And then for food service, we did, um, increase the appropriation and that line item by $800,000. And those were the only two changes from the last time I presented the appropriation document to you.
Okay, thank you. So I need a motion for treasurer's item A, approval of FY '21 amended appropriations?
I'll move. I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. Motion passes.
The next item is 6B, approval of the October 2020 financial reports. There are three reports in your packet. The first one is the, um, report from the system that indicates the revenue and fi- and the expenditures for October of 2020. The second one is the cash reconciliation for the month of October. And that, um, the bank balance is $844,476.46. The investment balances is $31,371,195.20. Um, that total between the two, $32,215,671.66. We had outstanding vendor checks of $653,092.31. There were adjustments of $221.50. If you add all that together, the total for the bank balance and the total for the, uh, financial system equals $31,562,357.85. The third report is the checks in October that were cut, um, over $1,000. We did have a finance committee, uh, meeting this evening and there were several, um, checks that, um, the finance committee members asked me to pull and we did. So I will go over those, uh, very quickly with you. The first one, um, there was a question on reading horizons and there was, um, uh, several checks for reading horizon, actually two checks. One in the amount of $148,974 and the other, um, was $24,500. And, um, that, this was a series of things for the, the one that was $148,000. And so it was some two-day implementation training, reading. Uh, there was some discovery, uh, for Madison Park and for ELC. And then for the $24,000 dollar, $24,500 one, it was for PD and one day of onsite fall coaching and then one day of onsite spring coaching. So those were, um, questions for tho- for that, for reading horizon. Another question was for, um, Zaner Blosser. And this was in the amount of $8,233.53. And this company, um, we, um, used for providing grades two, three and four handwriting. I think it was a virtual handwriting, um, class or instruction. And so that was that. And then the last one, um, CDW, um, and, um, one of the board members asked, you know, about the acronym. This is a company, CDW, I'm not sure if they, if that means anything, but a CDW Government, Inc. And we, and this had something to do with technology. And, um, this was in the amount of $5,046.28. And it was a network tester and wireless testers. And so, um, those were questions that were raised, um, during the finance committee meeting for those particular checks. And that was all I have for that, uh, particular section.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Allen. I now need a motion for treasurer's item B, approval of October 2020 financial reports?
So moved.
I have a motion and, and a second. Are there any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. Motion passes.
Okay, and the last item I had was approval for the November 2025 year forecast. And that's for action. We did, um, have a retreat that I did a presentation on, on the five-year. I just wanted to do some very, very high-level points for the audience that may not have been there. Um, so the, um, for the, um, November five-year forecast, it entails an actual data from FY 2018, FY 2019 and FY '20. Then it's forecast from FY, the current 2021 through 2025. And so we have projected revenue, and I'll talk about this year, revenue for the, for FY '21, um, uh, $40,606,996. And then expenditures of $43,145,999. Um, we anticipate the cash balance then for FY '21, If we go all the way out to FY 2025, we are estimating, um, a cash balance of $10,848,886. In addition to the five-year forecast, I have, for your information, have attached the notes that we will file with the, um, ODE tomorrow. I mean, that gives you even more of a detail of what went into putting the five-year forecast together.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
You're welcome.
I need a motion for treasurer's item C, approval of November 2025 year forecast.
I'll move.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? The only comment that I have is, um, I appreciate the overview on the five-year forecast this weekend at our retreat. Thank you very much. You made it very clear. If everybody could mute, that would be great. I'm getting some feedback. Thank you. You made it very clear where we stand. And, um, and again, um, tracking each and every dollar, building in, uh, a variance. So being extra conservative and for that, we appreciate you. If there are no other comments or questions, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
I have one comment.
Oh, go right ahead.
During our finance meeting, uh, as we have questions and we had a few tonight, uh, I really appreciated that, uh, the staff was able to immediately, and I do mean almost immediately, uh, bring us the information for those other checks that we had questions of. So if you would, Ms. Allen, pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeter Freeman.
Thank you. The leggo Riley in my office, she happened to be here. So she, um, actually, um, assisted me in getting that information. So I will pass that on. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. Motion passes. Next item's up, superintendent's report. Dr. Cosby, please.
Yes, well, this has been a really interesting night. We, um, had some really great presentations and I would like to also take the opportunity to announce that Westbrook Village has received the PBIS Bronze Award. This is a very important honor, is difficult to get, um, is very competitive. And so the fact that the building did receive it is, is a great honor to Troutwood Madison. And so I'm very proud of Westbrook Village and I believe we will be receiving some type of banners and things so that we can acknowledge this. So I wanted to say thank you. Um, for B is the approval of the personnel agenda.
Okay.
Personnel agenda, I can go through that or Dr. Davis is on the line. Dr. Davis, would you like to, um, go through our personnel agenda?
Hello, everyone. If you would like for me to, that's fine.
That would be great.
Um, there were no changes to the, um, A agenda, which is for the certified personnel. And so it is exactly as it was the last time we met. Would you like for me to go through that in detail or just go to B?
Um, yeah, you can, you can go through it, please, if you don't mind.
Okay, sure. Uh, so A1 is resignation for athletic director. A2 is the recommendation for changes where our staff receive additional education and as they, um, increase their certification and degrees, they move to a different level in terms of their salary. Um, A3 is recommendation for, um, new hires. And so we, um, were able to secure a reading lab teacher for Westbrook Village in terms of equitable services and an art teacher at, um, the ELC. A4 is our supplemental positions. We discussed those last time. Our mentors who are working with our, um, resident educators. And then A5 are the two subs that we had, um, secured to be building subs. Section B is our classified agenda. And so, um, the first section, there are resignations and we added a resignation for an LPN. Section B2 is for, um, where our staff are getting credit for their verification. So they were able to submit additional verification of employment. And once they do that, we see that increase in their salary as well. B3 is a correction to the agenda. Um, the coach who was listed there previously on the agenda, he did not work the entire season. And so because of that, his salary was adjusted accordingly. B4 are supplemental positions. Um, they're mostly coaches and we added two coaches. We received two recommendations for two coaches who have already begun working with the We received two recommendations for two coaches who have already begun working with the students. And this was for the integrated boys and girls basketball.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you very much. I need a motion to accept Superintendent's item. Where is that? I'm sorry, my computer is going crazy right now. Is it Superintendent? The Superintendent's item for the personnel agenda?
So move.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and second. Any questions?
I do have one, just because I just want to make sure of this. In light of everything that's happening with COVID, I know we just put those new basketball player, I'm sorry, coaches on, all those other coaches on. Are we going to be prorating those salaries as needed since we're not going to, we don't know what we're going to be doing, you know, in terms of basketball or anything? Or are we just going to, how will that, how will we proceed with that?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe we did prorate based on, you know, how much actually happened in the season.
Okay. So we'll just, we'll have to wait and see. Okay.
So is this the prorated amount that we're approving or voting on tonight? Or is this as is and it will be prorated in the future?
The amount that is listed on there is the regular amount. And if the season is cut short, then it will be prorated.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Judith Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Scares? I'm sorry. Mrs. Bowlesman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. Motion passes. Next item's up, discussion items and updates, 2020 supplementals, progress and participation. Dr. Cosby, please.
Yes. For the supplemental progress and participation, Tracy Mallory will be responding to that. When we first started this discussion, she had said that she would do this for us.
Good evening, everyone. So School Services has agreed to support Dr. Cosby in gathering implementation data on all of our extracurricular activities. And so I was under the impression that you wanted information at the end of the year on how the supplementals were going. And we would look at if we would use those certain supplementals at the, you know, before the school year began. But what I did go ahead and do was put together a document and I sent it to all of the extracurricular activities coaches. And that document, that information will be due to me on December the 10th. And we'll have the more, you know, detailed, some more detailed information about the fall extracurricular activities and the ones that are year-long as well. And so we'll be ready to present something a little bit more detailed in regards to the specifics of each of the supplementals at the December 17th meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Mallory? Okay.
I don't have any questions. I'm sorry.
Go right ahead, Mr. Scares.
Questions for Ms. Mallory. I do have a statement I would like to make on my own personal behalf. My prayer is, you know, I pray that no one feels individually attacked by any means in terms of the supplementals or things like that. But this is a very volatile situation that we're in right now. And from a board's perspective, I just hope they understand where we sit. Well, let me speak for myself, where I sit as a board member and my good conscience on not approving pay for activities that just can't happen given our circumstances. It's not that we question the integrity of the staff members. It's not that, you know, it isn't any of that. I just feel that, I just feel inclined to mention for anyone that might be listening or go back to watch it. It doesn't have anything to do with the integrity of the individual facilitating these programs. We just cannot, in good conscience, pay people for not doing anything. And it's not, and it's not any fault of their own. I just, that was, you know, kind of weighing on me. I needed to make sure I said that. So thank you.
If I could, just to, you know, let you know, I sent the survey out and several of them have already responded. They were eager to respond. I'm still waiting on some information from some of the extracurricular coaches. And just so you know, that data will look like what types of activities they did with the students, the number of meetings that they held, the dates of those meetings, and then if the actual goals that they set forth in those goal planning sheets were met and addressed.
Could you also, Ms. Mallory, add the number of participants?
Yes, it is in there as well already. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. And what we'll do is it's going to be an ongoing update on our supplementals. Okay? I know it may have been mentioned at the end of the year. But no, we are going to be talking about the supplementals pretty frequently. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from Ms. Mallory?
Thank you, Ms. Mallory.
Thank you. Next up, our board retreat. I want to make sure that we get this on the calendar. I know when we had a retreat last Saturday, we talked about having another retreat on January 9th, 2021. And closer to that time, as a board, we'll work on that agenda. But we, Ms. Freeman had some great ideas for strategic planning that we're going to put into action as well as sitting down and working with the superintendent on district goals. And each and every one of us will play a part on that agenda. So again, just wanted to mention that. And while we're at it, if anybody wants to make any comments about our previous retreat last Saturday, I'll open it up for comments.
I would like to make a couple of comments. I do think that we had a very nice retreat. We got a lot of really good information, information on ways to be healthy during the COVID. And those are, you know, holistic ways, ways that you don't have to take medicines for. For example, I learned that by increasing my vitamin D and my vitamin C, I would be exposing myself to things that were good things instead of bad. So that was something that was very helpful. As far as that January 9th retreat, I would ask if we would consider having my exec team there as well because if we're going to be talking strategic planning. And I know that we already have a really good strategic plan. And I would like for them to be able to attend if that's acceptable to you all as a board.
Okay. I have no problem with that, board?
No. Now, in fact, I thought that we would have them there, so I'm good.
Same here.
All right. Great. Okay, absolutely. That makes all the sense in the world. I know also at the retreat, we talked a little bit about the direction for the district. And Dr. Cosby, I just want you to share that those updates, things changed since Saturday? So maybe if you could speak on that?
Yes, yes. So on Saturday, we had made the decision that our staff would be working remotely from home on Fridays. There's been a significant change in what has occurred in our community. There was a resolution or what you call a resolution. There was a statement put out by the Department of Health that said that our numbers are increasing. And it was a stay-at-home order, basically is what it was. And so based on that and information gathered from what other communities are doing in my executive cabinet and also some of the things that had been said as we were in our meeting as well, I made the determination that our staff would be working remotely from when they return, which would have returned on November 30th until January 19th. The rationale for that is to allow that time in between each of these holidays, which are holidays where families do tend together. And even though that is not what is being recommended, unfortunately, we've seen so far throughout this that it is what has happened. We also have decided, or I decided, and I hope to get your support, I have decided that we will suspend our athletics and all of our extracurriculars from now until December 14th, which is the Monday that we would be coming back for our students. And that still would give that two weeks after Thanksgiving to allow that time for students to, you know, have some, not quarantine. Of course, we're not telling people to do that, but sometime apart from one another. And my understanding is that there really is some time even after that where the students will come back and have time to practice, to prepare, potentially two weeks or so before there are any games that are scheduled. So, or that they would participate in. So we did think that it was important to also take into account those students who are participating in athletics and other extracurriculars, in-person extracurriculars.
Okay. I'm going to open it up for discussion.
Dr. Cosby, I'd support that decision.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowlesman, did you have any questions?
It's going to say, I mean, it really, in light of how everything is going and, you know, we really do need to be cognizant of what's happening in our community. So I too support the decision to.
Yeah, board, okay, we're not going to do any polling, all right? But if it's the pleasure of the board, I would like to make a motion regarding this information. All right?
What, is this up for a vote?
Yeah, I will. I actually am going to make a motion. All right. Ms. Judith Freeman, did you have any comments?
No, I was just going to say that I also supported.
Okay. All right. Well, with that said, Mr. Andrews, you're nodding your head. I'd like to make a motion at this meeting tonight to support the decisions made by the superintendent and announced today, that she announced today regarding the staff working from home remotely between November 30th and January 19th to complete their responsibilities as assigned and to suspend winter sports until December 14th.
So move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Okay. Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowlesman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Judith Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Cosby.
Thank you.
Next item, Treasures comments. You're on mute, Ms. Allen, if you're talking.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I did have some comments. I actually sent you the Treasures update for November. And the first item was that we didn't receive the $1 million from Montgomery County this past Tuesday. And I went over this with the finance committee. I just wanted to let the rest of the board know how this money is being planned to be spent. Now, obviously, we have until the end of, middle of December to make any adjustments to this. But overall, virtual learning, it was looked at to spend $390,000. Personnel to include the long-term subs, a new IT technician and other positions from July 1st through December 4th, 2020, $165,000. We are planning to buy filtration systems for the buildings at a cost of $155,000. There are some behavior health initiatives that, at a cost of $100,000. And some of that are the sensory rooms. Athletics reimbursements of lost revenue and a scorer's table, $80,000. Student and staff headset, $60,000. And classroom technology, $50,000. Our final expenditure report is due on January 31st to the county that verifies all of these purchases. So we will be working on that. Also, we have some good news from the Bureau of Workers' Compensation. We just recently received a check for $143,432 that was a refund basically from the premiums that we paid from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. In addition to that, we will receive and have not received yet a very, very large check due to Governor Mike DeWine's request. And that equals $534,237. And so these monies, Mike DeWine said will offset any economic losses that either public businesses or public employers had during this pandemic. So that was some very, very, very good news. We talked about wellness at the retreat. And I just have some data for EPC wellness. We just received also an $8,000 check from the EPC. And that was because 40% of our eligible employees participated in the wellness program last year. So 129 employees received their $100 gift cards. And that was an increase of 11% from the previous year. This money obviously will be added to the pot of money that we already have. And this is to encourage individuals' wellness. And some of the ideals that we talked about were maybe providing virtual yoga classes. Again, providing discounts for the Fitbits. And then we had building challenges. So if a building, lunches for building challenges. So if a building did better than another building, or all five or six buildings, then they would be provided lunch for that day. And so that was the report that I attached to the board docs and I also sent to the board. So that was my report for November.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up, Dr. Cosby, any comments? You're on mute.
My first comment would be that I think I should go before Ms. Allen when she's talking about money that we're receiving because that moves her a very hard act to follow. She's giving us nothing but good news tonight, but for sure, we could use it in the financial realm. So I do think I found something to compete. And so I will give my report. I would like to share with you some alumni news. And I think we're going to all be so proud and impressed with Trotwood Madison alumni. So first, I would like alumni who is a family nurse practitioner at Five Rivers. So she's an alumni who's come back to actually help in the community. And she's right next door to us at Five Rivers. So that's exciting. Also, another one of our former students, Willis Blackshear Jr. He's Ohio State representative for the 39th District. He is an alumni. Amanda Bertram Zimmerman, Zimmerlin is the city manager of Clayton. She is an alumni. And finally, I would like to mention David Scott. He was on TV and he really represented Trotwood well as a local artist. He was the lead artist on the Oregon District. He was the lead artist on the Oregon District Gateway Art, is a beautiful piece of art. I think there is no question for the people who are on this call of how wonderful our students are and, and how great they are. Um, but I wanted to get this documented because I want everybody to know how proud we are of our alumni. Thank you.
Thank you, that is very good news. Thank you for sharing.
That's it for me.
Okay. Next up, um any board committee reports? If not, we'll move on to the board comments. Mr. Andrews, any comments?
Um, yes, um, I was, I was told that um Ms. Ernestine brought some national attention and accolades to Troywood this week. Um, she called into the uh nationally syndicated Steve Harvey Morning Show. And as she identified herself as a resident of uh Troywood, Ohio, uh she couldn't get it all out. Steve Harvey jumped all over, I know Troywood, some of my boys live in Troywood. And then he went through a uh, uh, I, I, I was kinda pleasantly surprised. He went through a list of the uh musical groups that ha- have recorded, uh come through uh Dayton area and, and kinda put Dayton on the map. But he gave a big shout out to Troywood early this week. Uh, and thank you through uh Ms. Ernestine.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Mr. Scares?
No comments, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Ms. Jeter Freeman?
Uh, no comments tonight.
Hmm, thank you very much. And Vice President Bozeman?
Just a few comments. Congratulations to Westbrook, of course, you know, knocking that out with PBIS. Good news about the alumni. Now that, now that I know we're gonna be recognizing alumni, I got some good, I'm gonna start bringing more good news to you. Some of them, so I'll be bringing those. Um, another idea that I was thinking about was about the retreat. Um, one of the things I walked away with um about the retreat was that I think we're looking at the whole COVID-19 crisis in a whole, whole, in a more of a holistic fashion now, which I think is better. And we're not just jumping in, just putting out fires and, and not thinking ahead. I think we're thinking ahead and we're looking at it um in a different way. And, and I, I appreciate that. And I hope that we can continue to look at things more holistically. So it was a very good retreat. And I liked how we um kinda changed our viewpoint. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice President. Uh, my only comment is um first and foremost, I wanna say congratulations to our superintendent on being recognized by her peers. That's, that's a huge honor. Uh, so again, and you're, and you're our superintendent. So that makes us feel good. In addition to that, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome, on the PBIS award for Westbrook Village. And another thing that came out of the retreat, um Ms. Bozeman, you, you just jogged my memory. You know, we talked about, um, this is great to recognize alumni, but there are some folks in the district that are doing a bang-up job. I mean, there are some staff members, and I, I don't just mean teachers because usually when we talk, we say teachers, but I mean teachers and staff. Um, part of our district family, they are going over and above. And that's one thing that we talked about, um, being able to possibly recognize them. Going ahead and getting those names and um setting it up. I don't know, maybe we can even have peers nominate peers. Because this is a time, especially since we're going remote, for people to stay close. Uh, there's gonna be a lot of helping hands. And we just wanna make sure that people understand that we, we acknowledge that, we recognize that, and, and we thank them for that. So if we could get something going in that direction. In addition to that, I wanna say thank you, Dr. Cosby, for um your invitation this morning to be on the superintendent's platform meeting with the state. Um, my counterpart, Ms. Jeter Freeman, she, you had, she just has some great insights on too much homework. And homework, and grading homework. Um, and, and that's from the standpoint of uh individual who's, she's grandma, who's working with her grandson. Um, and, and the in, information was invaluable to the panel. And again, it just gave me an opportunity to glean information about what other superintendents are doing and what they're thinking uh along the lines of being creative and innovative throughout COVID and how we can really reinvent ourselves um to be very effective. So, thank you. Those are all my comments. Thank you for, everybody for being here with us this evening as well. We appreciate you always. And now I need a motion to adjourn into executive se- session to consider the discipline of a public employee and also matters to be kept confidential by federal law or rules of state statute.
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. Are there any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, motion passes. We will adjourn into executive session. Um, no action will be taken. It is 6:46. And thank you for everybody who joined us on the platform. We will return to this meeting to adjourn appropriately. Thank you. Everybody else can meet in our other Google room that we're.